Here we go. Thank you. And I don't have a hard copy of the agenda, so I'm gonna wing this here.
4.01.
Yeah, the board met in closed session immediately prior to opening it up to discuss personnel matters. And we are now opening it up for open session. Okay, here we go. We have Mr. We have a forum present live and then Mr. Unger is joining us by Zoom. And Mr. Vanfield and Edoa Drew are not joining us today in vacation. And the first thing I would like to do is open it up to public comment for anything not on the agenda. If there's a topic you'd wish to address that is an agenda topic, we would request that you wait until then unless you're unable to do so. We have three minutes per topic, per speaker. We will time it, time the meeting, time that you're speaking. And at this time, I would ask if there's anyone who has, who'd like to make public comment.
I do not see anybody with their hands up in Zoom.
All right, and Mr. Angel.
Hi, I'm Phil Angel, SLCT president. We're just here to, this is Caroline Mettersen, Cada, excuse me. Only take me here. Now, we're just here to introduce ourselves to the Assistant Superintendent and welcome to the district. So thank you for having us. I think we have busy summer agendas, so we're not gonna stay very long. That's it? Yeah, I think so. Well, thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, Phil and Caroline.
I can't wait to see you both later.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
COTA?
COTTA.
COTTA, all right. I'll remember that.
Thanks for coming.
This is much better than me, I think.
Thanks for coming.
And then at this time, we have, we'll move on to 5.01, which is introduction of new district administrators.
Well, I just would like, if it's okay, it's a little awkward in this setting with the summer board study session structure. But I just wanted to formally put a face to the name. You had heard last spring that we're able to hire after a statewide, nationwide search for a new Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services following the retirement of Diane Frost. And as all of you know, this is a very, very critical position in our district. And we did quite an extensive search. And I have to tell you how pleased Diane to introduce our new Assistant Su- Lisa Yamashita. And she is, really, I said to her last spring, I said, you know, you're gonna move here from Oregon. You're gonna bring your whole family here. It's gonna be fairly stressful and involved. So I don't want you to feel pressured. Come on July 17th and don't worry about it and we'll get you started. Well, on Monday, July 10th, she was here. And raring to go, I showed up and she was there and said, you know, I'm here, let's get started. And that is an outstanding portrait of her professional ethic. And, you know, I do wanna say, because I'm gonna give her a chance to kind of share a little bit about herself, her background, or maybe a little bit about her family. But I recall very clearly the interview process. And Lisa was far and away the top candidate. She shined from the very beginning, all the way through to the second round and final round with me and my team. And, you know, she's got a super positive demeanor. Her professional acumen is gonna be revealed in time. And I think she's gonna be a fantastic fit for us and take us to the next level as a district. So I look forward to working with her. I wanted to introduce her formally in front of the board and on Zoom to the community. And with that, Lisa, would you like to share a little bit about yourself?
I would love to. Thank you all for having me and welcoming me here. I am so grateful that I got to be selected out of that a bit intense process, as it usually is. But I come to you with a variety of backgrounds and experiences that I'd like to share a little bit about. And then I will share a little bit about my personal family life too. Because I'm sure many of you are wondering, you know, who is Lisa and where does she fit in the boxes? Which is what I would be saying if I were in your shoes. So I grew up in Costa Mesa, Orange County, right by Newport Beach, with a sister and mom and a dad and did very well in high school. I loved everything about being in sports and being a cheerleader and being in choir. And I did all the things there were to do. And from there, I received an academic scholarship to be a chemical engineer of all things at USC. But in the transition there, I reignited my passion, which is truly education. And it probably would have been relevant to know that in second grade, I was making bulletin boards for Mr. Barr. My high school senior project was actually teaching in my third grade teacher's classroom. This is crocky. But so it took me a little while to recognize my passion for working with other kids and school years and bulletin boards and all of it. So when I graduated, I became a teacher in Glendale Unified School District. I worked there for nine years. I started at a very high needs, 1,200 student elementary school that was a four-track, multi-year-round calendar. So one of the school years I was sharing with Mr. Unger, I had to move my first grade classroom every month with six-year-olds. So it helped me develop a sense of keeping things simple and easy to move around. But as my career progressed, I wanted to be in a traditional track school. And I moved to Glen Oaks Elementary and taught there for four years, mostly in the primary grades. I did teach a year of high school at Glendale High School as well. And then I earned my master's degree from Cal State LA in literacy, reading, and language arts. And I began to teach there at Cal State LA on how to teach reading and how to teach writing. I became one of their writing project fellows as well. And so I got to teach in the Young Writers Camp over the summer. And then I earned my administrative credential and moved on to a school in West LA by UCLA. And I served as the assistant principal there. And the reason I'm so grateful for that opportunity is in my role as assistant principal, I was primarily responsible for all the special education. And as a general education teacher, I hadn't had at the primary grades, I didn't have much experience with that. But in my new role, I wrote IEPs, I evaluated the special education teachers, I managed the introduction process and PSS process now with students. We had a special day autism preschool class, so I got to meet many preschoolers that were really fun. And then I, of course, wanted to move on to be my own principal. And so in that, I had the opportunity to move to Southern Oregon for the first time. And I became principal of Mountain View Elementary that was a high needs, it was actually identified program improvement by the federal guidelines at the time when I arrived. But happy to say, we really increased student achievement by implementing intervention programs. And I had the opportunity also then to take over and get to supervise our one, well, it was technically a two-room schoolhouse out in rural Lake County. And that was super fun, too. I got pregnant with my daughter and wanted to take a little bit of time off. And so I had to quit that role. And when I returned to the workforce, well, in my year off, I taught at Cal State Northridge and supervised student teachers. And then when I wanted to go back to work full-time, I was able to earn the principalship at Chaparral Elementary in Claremont Unified School District, which serves the communities right around the Claremont Colleges. It was a very high-performing, large elementary school. And I had a great time helping improve math scores for our students there. And we increased the development opportunities of our, they called it a PFA, not a PTO at the time, and had a great time there. And then I was recruited to go back to Southern Oregon to serve in the district office role. And I was hired to be the Director of Curriculum and Assessment. And I supervised their gifted programming and the educational technology was under my purview. So I had the opportunity to lead on the education side, the changeover of our student information system, which is actually kind of like a huge thing. And then in the middle of COVID, I had the opportunity to implement a learning management system for all of the teachers. And so I kind of became a tech guru at our house up there. And to that end, then, of course, I had the opportunity to meet Dr. Crater and your amazing staff here. So I couldn't be happier to transition my family. I live with my husband, longtime husband, and daughter Sarah, who is now 10. It's been decades since that work at Cal State Northridge. And we are avid golfers. My daughter's a competitive little golfer and we do some travel around that. We love to travel. We have family. We are so excited to be here because now we have family in SoCal and in NorCal. And we're like the central hub of everybody on all sides. And my daughter is so happy to be near the ocean. So she picked up surfing. We went to surf camp as soon as we landed. And she's currently doing junior guards, which she's loving in Oceano. And I had the opportunity last week to go surfing for the first time and just adored it. So I'm a boogie boarder, but I haven't tried surfing before. I love to bake pies and play with my dog Nellie, who's a golden retriever, who is two, but still full on puppy time. So I love the opportunity to get to know and work with all of you and the amazing staff here as in this coastal school district.
Any questions for Lisa?
Welcome. Thank you so much. This is, we're really happy to have you. As you know, you have good shoes to fill, but it can be done. It needs to be done for our kids.
Well, I would love to take a moment to celebrate Diane Frost's work with me. I cannot tell you how critical it was that she took time to meet with me as soon as I was hired every other week. We did a weekly check-in so that I could learn about the district before my arrival. And in addition to that, I got to spend two days with her touring the amazing sites and schools and meeting every principal here. And then I had the opportunity to come in June to help find, you know, an assistant that will serve for Christine and I moving forward and hire someone. And so I cannot tell you how instrumental Diane is going to be and continues to be in my transition here to make it smooth.
And I'd also like to, thank you, Lisa. And I'd also like to let you all know that Stephanie Shepherd was unable to make it today. But, you know, because the transition to a new community is really tricky. And so Stephanie Shepherd, she is replacing Rick, long-term, longtime elementary director and principal, Rick Mayfield, after his retirement. And Stephanie Shepherd comes to us from the suburbs of Seattle. And she's going to be a fantastic complement to Lisa. Her background, she spent over a decade in the state of Hawaii working with their highest need elementary and elementary schools. And she is arguably an expert in the area of early childhood literacy. So it'll be fun to see how she takes on the new ELA adoption, especially with the science, science of reading discussions that are going on across the nation. And so in those two critical positions of Assistant Su- of Ed Services and Elementary Director, we have two very capable, oh, and Stephanie was a principal for nine years in Seattle as well. And she too, like Lisa, brought her elementary school from a place of struggle to a place of higher performance. And as a former principal, all, as you all know, my cabinet team's made up of former principals who have been successful. And I think that's a real important core value of ours. And what Stephanie expressed to us in her interview was her ability to really hone in and focus on those achievement markers as well as, you know, the social, emotional health of kids. So we're excited to have this new team and this new transition. Hi, Linne. Good to see you.
Apparently I have, I was an hour off.
Yeah, okay. Linne, this is Lisa Yamashita.
And you know, we're gonna take a little break and sit in a few minutes when you're wrapping up.
Hi.
Yep. So that's it? And so Stephanie will come, will join us in the next few days. And then in August, I'll have her come and introduce herself to the board as well.
Okay. So just so people have an opportunity to shake your hand and rather than in this more formal setting, we're going to take a break. It's 10:38. Let's come back at 10:50, please. And we'll go on with the rest of our, with the rest of our meeting.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Somebody's covering me. 15 minutes to get here, 20 minutes.
80% this?
Yeah. We are back.
It's very useful.
It is very useful. It's on a write-up 2000 word essay I need to quote you pick with.
Mr. Clausen, we are back in open session. Back on Zoom.
Great to be here.
I'm muted. Glad you're here.
Okay.
You put your gun on your nose.
All right, we are now going to move on to the agenda. Item 5.02, we will be at each spot asking for public comment as we move on. But I'll ask now, if there's anyone with public comment prior before we get started. Seeing none, I will turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Pickerton. Am I correct?
Yeah. All right. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn on my individual screen too, so people can see me. If you can't see the picture, but. So the first agenda item today is really just a review for the board members of our Phase 1 projects as well as Phase 2 potential projects that are not board members. of our Phase 1 projects as well as Phase 2 potential projects that are not board approved at this time. But are part of the overall facility master plan that we've discussed before with the board. Long term, you know, Measure C projects, that, you know, the gist of everything. So this should be a new conversation. But for the public's sake, I did include copies of our current Phase 1 project budgets and architect fees and site and the work that's associated with those, which we'll discuss in a minute. And then also the potential Phase 2, we started putting that budget together. And really, the key area for this board agenda item today really goes to the recommended construction delivery methods by site. Okay, so what I would like to do is just do a quick review of the Phase 1 projects. Mr. Bonneman is gonna pull up the Google Earth. And then we'll kind of look at the actual site itself. And we'll talk about what Phase 1 is, what Phase 2 is, then potential Phase 3 projects. At the very, and then for each school as we go through then, I'm gonna share the the potential construction delivery method we'd like the board to consider. And at the very end, ask you to approve construction delivery methods for all of the Phase 1 projects. Okay? So that's kind of the part that I thought it'd be, you know, the best to go through one by one. So, Mr. Bonneman? You ready to drive?
Yep.
Alright, well, let's start with our first school, which would be Baywood Elementary School. Yeah. So just some, you know, basic information for the board with Baywood is Baywood is a, as Chris pulls it up, Baywood is a complete, the hope is that Baywood is a complete reconstruction of the campus. Where we would literally rebuild the campus where the current field and basketball courts are. And then when the campus is completed, we would then tear down the current building there, the main classroom building, and redo the fields in that area. So kind of a swap for swap. And that, the purpose of that would be that we would be able to continue to have the school functioning on the site while we're doing construction, right? So we don't have a place for them to just leave and they come back, you know, three years later after construction's over. So you'll see from this Google Earth slide, so what we're discussing is again, the back in the 90s, I believe, Measure A, new multipurpose room, kitchen, band room. That's the top building of this slide in the Google Earth. That remains, right? So in Phase 2, we would be looking at modernizing that building. And when I say modernization, I want you to know we're talking about exterior paint, stucco, windows if needed, doors. We're talking about HVAC roofing. We're also on the interior side, we're also talking about, you know, finishes. So carpet, linoleum, paint, you know, ceiling tiles. So when I say I'm modernizing a building, I'm talking about all of those things, right? It's been a direction, a focus with Measure C to add air conditioning. So it'll be replacing HVAC units, which is again HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, right? So when we talk about replacing HVAC, I'm talking about air conditioning as well with all of these sites.
My understanding is we don't have a lot of air conditioning. So are we replacing or are we putting in the air conditioning in some site?
So.
My understanding is, my thought is, we don't have AC in many sites.
So we, yeah, so we have it in all of our, so again, we have it now in Morro Bay and Salmo-Salem, as well as for modernization. We have it in all of our portables on all of our campuses having AC.
Okay.
Okay? Because that just comes, portables have, that's part of it type of thing, so.
You used to say replace, but are we?
What we're, we are replacing the HVAC units.
Right, we have.
Which is the heating, ventilation, pushing air through the building, those types of things. And while we're doing that replacement, we'll be adding air conditioning as well.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay?
Even to the coastal elementary sites?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Buckman's, if I understand your question more fully, what I think you're trying to say is, are all of our schools and all of our classrooms and related buildings going to have air conditioning?
They do.
By the end of Measure C? And the answer to that is?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the direction I believe I've been given through this process. And that's what.
And that's what I told people.
That's when the plan is.
As I went out in Measure C, that's what I was explaining to, especially our teachers.
Sometimes people get HVAC and air conditioning mixed up in terms of just heating or just air conditioning, you know, those types of. I just wanna make sure when we say we're replacing HVAC, it's heating, ventilation, airflow, as well as they're adding air conditioning to these sites. Okay? So you're gonna see HVAC replacement a lot through these documents, and that's what it means, right? So I just wanna make sure. And then again, when we talk about modernizing buildings, it's the entire structure now. I say that, and you'll see this in the budget documents, a lot of schools just need light modernization. You know, Modern Grove Elementary School is one of our newest schools. So the interior of that campus, you walk, right? It's a good, great trade, right? So maybe some paint touched up here, those types of things. But not a lot of work on the interior of those classrooms, even parts of Laguna, right? The middle school itself or Los Osos Middle School where definitely paint and, you know, carpet, linoleum or new cement, you know, floors, those types of things. But we kind of looked at that at each site as we went through. And then you'll have other sites, like we're gonna talk about Pacheco, where it's a complete guts, right? Or I mean, we're talking about bringing it down to the studs, redoing it, Los Osos or Los Ranchos, their kindergarten building. And again, a lot of that's age of the building, how old it is, the size, you know. So it varies, and that's why you'll see as we go through these budgets, sometimes there's change, there's differences in the amount that we validated per square foot to modernize that space. Okay? So for Baywood Elementary, again, yes, Mary?
Just going back to HVAC for one second. Are we looking at a standard spec across the district? Or are you anticipating different systems for different schools?
So we would love to have a standard spec. And we, again, I think the spec will be the same, the manufacturer of those units may be different. So we'd love to have the same, have the same things, but it's a cost as well, right? So you start with single source items, single source of particular model or something we want to use across the district. And then that company finds out and then, you know, you have no competition.
But will you have like a heat pump system that will be consistent throughout the district or a very, um?
Calling this one.
Actually, that is very dependent on conditions.
Okay.
And then we do have a couple manufacturers to go back and forth on our specs. So I'm gonna give it to the architect. Here's the two that we'd like to use, one of those two, so we have options. And then depending on if it's a heat pump or not, I'll depend on the actual condition, so.
Thank you.
Okay? So a couple of things about Baywood, right? This is our, out of all of Measure C projects, this is our biggest one from a dollar standpoint budget. Okay? The entire campus, right? Really building a new campus. So what we've done for this is, and you won't see so far, we haven't assigned an architect there, even though the board's approved this as a Phase 1 project. We don't have an architect yet, and I'll tell, I'll talk about why, as well as that we're gonna ask the board to approve some sequel documentation. And so the reason why it's not on there yet is we have to answer some questions first before we actually put that information out and do the sequel documents and move forward. And really, the focus of this was, are we going to build a new campus as stick built, which is your basic, you know, framing, normal construction that you would see? Or are we gonna look at, you know, potential stick built and modular construction from a cost-saving standpoint or just modular across the board for this campus? So what we have done to kind of help the board come to that decision is, you know, we've and the board went around, we looked at different modular classrooms. We got varying opinions from districts about how much you really save or don't save. And so what we've done is we have, which we'll talk about as we go through this, we have three sites. They're gonna have modulators in this Phase 1. So two at Del Mar Elementary School, TKK classrooms, 1300 square foot with restrooms. Two at Modern Grove, same thing. And then we have four of those rooms at Bishop's Peak, along with a restroom module. So that, and those are replacing current portables that are on campus. So much nicer than the current portables that are there. Along with that, so we're gonna be getting prices for those. We're gonna see how much they cost per square footage, what's the reality of what those cost. At the same time, we're gonna be stick-built Pacific Beach High School. So doing regular construction there. And so, and what we've done is we've had the architects, and Mr. Playa, the designer from RRM, we've had them kind of do the design where the structure of the buildings kind of lay out the same as a modular construction. So we should, after getting those bids for those construction projects, be able to come to you and say, hey, this is what a stick-built Baywood campus cost, estimate. And this is what, if we do a modular or some combination, would cost, okay? To date, the Phase 1 projects, our estimate for Phase 1 projects is $175 million. Soft costs, hard costs, everything, which is one of the sheets that you have. We've put together a Phase 2 estimate, looking at the rest of the projects that we have. So Phase 2 is approximately $146 million. Okay? So that, that puts us at $320 million out of a $349 million bond measure. Now, the Phase 2 we've built in escalation costs, I mean, these, to me, those two are pretty conservative numbers, right? Because I wanna be conservative from the get-go. I want, you know, we wanna ensure that we're gonna get these projects done and how we're gonna do them. So the Phase 3, which we'll talk, and I'll show you as we go through each site, is really, okay, the remaining portables on campus, what are we dealing with those, right? Some campuses, we won't even need to replace them. Because by fixing up the new permanent classroom links and by putting in the new modulators at a few schools, that will be enough classroom space, and we won't need to replace those portables, right? But if we do replace the portables, is it gonna be modules? Is it gonna be stick-built? Is it gonna just be replacing them with portables? And that'll be a budget conversation that we'll have over the time, right? So, you know, as we kind of learn more, as we go progress through this process. Now again, we'll have more than $349 million, right? My hope is that we get that number up to $400 million, to be quite honest with you, right? So whether that's getting grants, whether that's getting interest on those bond dollars, you know, all of those things, right? That we saw with Measure D. We turned $177 million into $225 million, right? So I, we will do everything in our power to make that happen. So but again, this is a real, these two budgets I'm giving you and sharing with the public today, this is conservative. Like, you know, I plan on bringing it less than that. You know, so the soft cost is 25%, those types of things. My hope is that, like with Measure D, we're gonna come in under that as we go through. But I also don't wanna, I don't wanna promise the world and not deliver. So there's that conservative nature of beginning in this manner, right? So again, all that said, my hope is that we will, in the 22, 23 school year, we will have bid the modulators, we will know what Pat Beach is gonna cost. I will be able to come back to you probably in the beginning of the year 2020, 2024. And we'll be able to discuss with the board kind of those cost structures. And the board will be able to make a decision on how are we moving forward with Baywood Elementary School. Okay? Then we'll get an architect on board, we'll move forward with that process, you know, as a Phase 1 project.
Beginning of the calendar year?
January 24, February 24. So we'll begin to bid these, we'll know cost, you know, we'll have a much better idea around that. Okay? And again, the reason for that, it is the biggest chunk of our Measure C budget is going towards Baywood. So yeah, like, why are we starting? What's going on with Baywood? Well, it's because it is the biggest budget. So I wanna make sure that we do that project right and that we're, you know, we're squared away from the get-go. Mr. Buckman?
Yeah, so I hear that Baywood's the biggest project, but we're looking at all its others. We're gonna spend money on those, we might have cost delay. So whatever it is, so I'm concerned that we finally get to Baywood and we don't have the funds. I think we've already started, okay? Then the second, the second thing is, we keep, and I think you've addressed it, but we keep addressing Baywood is the only complete site, but we know Pat Beach is, I think you just addressed that. So the biggest question I have right now is, when we look at this, is there a dollar per ADA that we also figure in for construction of sites, especially from the ground up, like Pat Beach and Baywood?
There's not.
Okay, so.
It's really a facility need, what is the school, what do you need to have a school?
Right, which is ADA.
No, not necessarily.
Because it looks like.
You could have Teach Elementary School with, you know, 180 kids. And you could have Del Mar Elementary School with, you know, 350.
Right, that's why.
And they both need a multipurpose room. They both need a library. They both need an office.
So the state, so within the world of the state for doing construction, is there not an average ADA cost for construction?
No.
Okay? So then when I look at these numbers, it looks, to me personally, it looks like Pat Beach is 18, I think St. Shimer's 21, Modern Grove's remodel's 20, and then 45 for a homeschool. But we're also building a homeschool at Pat Beach. And we don't have, we don't know what the numbers are gonna be at Pat Beach. Are we gonna put a limit on the attendance at Pat Beach? You see what I'm saying? I mean, the facility, the facility we build today is only gonna be able to handle X numbers, just the way the old one.
And will you build it out to accommodate a certain number of students?
Exactly, thank you.
Uh, yeah.
So do we have?
Of course, we were adding classrooms to Pat Beach, so they will, we'll be able to have that. We also have 30 years of data on how many kids are at Pat Beach. And so there's, you know, if for some reason, Pat Beach became a different school and started taking on more kids, we would have to potentially add classrooms to that site, bigger than what we have projected. But what we projected with this plan that we currently have is increasing the square footage of that campus right now, right? So I mean, it's, they're gonna have a CTE classroom, they're gonna have, right now they have the little sewing room. Now they're gonna have two large CTE classrooms. So there's definitely room for growth at that site.
The thing is, the new and improved Pat Beach may be more appealing, maybe appealing to more students than the, you know, the current.
But taking off to accommodate more kids, I mean, that school can accommodate more kids even that, right?
Right.
And then also, wouldn't it be similar to when we had increased enrollment in our other neighborhood schools where we brought in portables if necessary or their footprint was allowed?
Yeah.
So.
So for if we, if we were in that position of needing additional classrooms.
And honestly, in most of our school sites, we're seeing declining enrollment. So like I said, with Phase 3, we have portables on a lot of our campuses that we're probably just gonna get rid of and not replace, because we don't need them, right? Our focus has really been on the permanent classroom buildings. And make sure that those are updated, we're modernizing those. And then we're also, the focus has been on the TKK classrooms, right? So and, you know, bringing those in.
So when you talk about the possibility of needing portables, we know there's certain infrastructure. I'm gonna think it's water and electricity that we need for portables. I don't know, maybe there's something else. Is there a location even now that we're thinking about where portables would go and would need an expansion? So we have identified, I'm just making this up, we've identified the baseball field at Pat Beach, right? Is it, would it be smarter or less expensive to put in just some minimum infrastructure now that we're already digging up the campuses than to wait and then, oh my God, now we need portables?
Yeah, so what I would tell you is, yes, we do that.
We do do that.
Yes, absolutely. Entire infrastructure, the site, future build-out, I mean, like at Modern Grove Elementary School, right? And they have a whole area that's already, the conduits are there, ready to go to add more portables there. Because I think at the time, we thought Modern Grove was gonna grow, Los Osos was gonna grow, and so it's ready to go, right? But we already currently have a lot of that infrastructure in place.
Right.
Where the current portables are located at most of our sites. And so we're not gonna get rid of that infrastructure. It'll still be there and it will be.
We just take the portables out.
And if we need to in the future, right? Or if we decide we may need to put some new modules in, there's still on that area, whatever the need will be on this site.
So I was just thinking about Pat Beach.
Yeah, I, you know, Pat Beach, again, with the addition of what we're doing, what we're planning here is, is, I mean, they could have double their current ADA with what we're planning right now.
But we also might have, we got, we have CTE now is the, is the thing, technology maybe. So I just, I'm just thinking, Pat Beach may actually grow more than we expect. And maybe the putting in some infrastructure for one, two portables is maybe cost of that, cost of that.
That's easy. And Mark, I can't tell you. But Mark, your point is excellent. It's excellent.
And and Mark, but Mark, your point is excellent, it's excellent, it's 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 a wise.
It's really one they're, when they're digging up and they're laying in the utilities, we always add extra.
Right. We always do, right.
So in this case, we'll just make sure that, you know, the most logical place that they run that empty condo too and leave a utility box in the ground, so for future use, we're good to go.
And that's really the only site that I would even have that worry at this point, right? Because most of our sites, we're we're probably going to be able to take away classrooms when we're done.
Yeah.
So you would step in for plumbing as well?
So they would be, we'd get water there and electrical condo.
Okay.
Types of room, thinking about it.
And in the past, we had um such programs like Pacheco where we had to cap.
Yep.
Because of the.
It's not a problem.
The available space, you know, so we we have done that.
So so you're going to, so to Baywood, what I just wanted, so for the Baywood, people to understand, right? If they're watching this or part of this, it's not that we're neglecting Baywood or don't plan, no, it's a Phase One project.
Okay.
The board has prioritized Baywood Elementary School, right? I just need to get that information to be able to share a, you know, a a realistic budget of what that campus will look like, kind of make a plan for that, right? Which is why I've also held off on hiring an architect, because if it's stick-built, that's a whole different architectural design than if we're doing modular, part, you know, those types of things. So they really can't move forward without, you know, kind of having that answer in place.
So along those lines, stick-built, modular. There was a lot of discussion back when we were doing PLA, right? I'm not, I'm not talking PLA. All I'm talking about is our local contractors, we're pretty, you know, we want to keep stuff local, dah 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 dah. Now we're, now there's this possibility that we're sending stuff off, I'm just making a to a, to a factory in Illinois where they're going to basically put our, build our school.
In California, yeah.
Okay, in California, they're going to build our school. In my mind, that means less work for local contractors, local people.
Potentially.
And less, less growing those, I can't remember what it's called. You put a dollar into the, you know, our end and it ends up a hundred dollars when it gets to the grocery store. And so we heard from our local contractors about their feelings about modular versus stick.
So there's, what I would tell you is there's a balance with all those things, right? So we um, you know, this is also a budget. And and the number of um and the amount of work that we want to get accomplished through this Measure C project, right? And be able to do so, um that, you know, and and honestly, like, we have very few modular classrooms. And when we talk about the totality of Measure C, we're talking miniscule amounts of like modular potential classrooms, right? Other than what we may do at Baywood, that that's the one kind of unknown. But other than that, very few, right? And there's still local contractors have to prepare the land, get it set up. So it's, they're still part of it, they're still part of that process, right? Which we're talking about, um in terms of of work effort and those types of things. But there's.
So.
I I mean, I I care about local contractors getting business and sharing with that, but my my overall arching kind of focus is getting all of these projects done at all of our school sites.
So so when I.
And accomplishing that.
So when I look at the final number here, it's a hundred and seventy-four billion dollars. We had three hundred, just roughly, three hundred and fifty million approved by the public, right? So that leaves, my mistake, that leaves about two hundred and thirty-seven billion dollars unaccounted for at this point, no cash.
So you also have a Phase Two budget where I have accounted for another hundred and forty-six million, right? So we're down to three twenty at that point.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it.
So again, it's it's a juggling act a little bit, but I love to stick-build everything. Heck, yeah, that'd be great, right? If we can, if we could do that, but it's just whether or not that's.
Round your point that feasible. Eighty to ninety percent of our construction is going to be stick-built, whether we do modulators or not. And so we're providing a huge amount of work to local contractors to build a significant. Yes. And and so if a if a small portion ends up modular and that is more cost-effective for us, that's a consideration.
That's it.
Maybe put things in the budget and we're taking care of the local contractor and getting well either way, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah, and they're not complaining about that, about that. In fact, they'll, we'll have multiple contractors who want to take these lease-leaseback contracts and work with the modular companies to help us get this economy, right? And other school districts, just so you know, around us, they're like, UCMR, probably eighty percent of their construction was modular. So there's no. Which doesn't, which is their issue, that problem, right, there for them. But just so you know, like, we're very much more stick-built, physical buildings, modernizing what we currently have.
There's no one pushing back on the concept.
Zero, I've had no need for it.
So let's not forget, there's still using local contractors, there's still electrical hookups, there's still utilities, there's still running the uh uh lane slab foundations. Those are, you know, if it's included with the modular company, they hire local people to do that. It's just the building itself is.
But I totally get Mark's point, right? So the more stick-built we do, the more that, more money goes into economy, more local, it's absolutely positive, right? And um and for the most part, with Measure D, that's what's going to happen.
And I, it's my understanding that it's not uncommon to have to to be unable to do a hundred percent local. And we had to use.
Well, there'll be sun outside.
A hundred, right, we we had to do that with Measure D, was we, there were, we did, we were unable to do everything.
Because of.
Certain skills, certain skills, certain people, they they're not, we don't have those, um they don't work in this area, right? So it's not.
In order to make some savings somewhere, modular has to be replacing something that was being done either local or by contractors. That's that's my, that's my issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
But if it's replacing something that was more expensive.
With modular.
If you take something that costs X and you replace it with sixty percent of X and you get more, what's the issue with that?
There's, well, the it the the issue is, there's other places we could save money in the district that kind of would sound similar, but we don't do it. Kids, just just crazy, kids could share textbooks and we would, we would save money. So if all we're interested in is the dollar amount, A, there's other places to do it, and I'm not sure, and I I did a lot of research, I can't find anywhere where there's longevity studies on modulars. I can't find anywhere that says, you know, I went to look at Hawthorne, Earth Bay Down in Hawthorne, it was several, many years ago. There were, I'm not sure that there were any modulars, but I can't find anything that says modulars survive severe, but we've got schools here down here that did survive.
But there's a set of information there. I have something to make decisions on, and you're saying you've done separate research. I mean, what I'm hearing, I guess what I've heard over the last few months.
Yeah.
Is that we generally believe modulars and stick-built have comparable quality, longevity and and ability. And it's possible that modulars may cost less in certain situations. And if they can, if we get equal solutions for less money, it frees up more budget to do more in the bond, right?
So my question then becomes, then why not just do everything, sorry, why not just do everything modular?
There's certain scenarios where modular makes sense, there's certain, or it doesn't, is what you presented, right?
Where we're looking at modular construction is really at where we're ground, it's it's a new building, right? Most of the buildings in Sanlo, in our San Luis Coastal are physical buildings like this, or it would cost more to knock the building down and bring in modulators than just modernize the current building.
Yes.
Chris, go ahead.
This has been an interesting discussion. Um I just want to point out that my interest, and I believe the board's interest, is spending that three hundred and fifty million dollars uh and pot, you know, potentially four hundred million dollars, um getting the projects done that we promised the community that we would get done, the taxpayers that we would get done. That the the discussion between whether we should be doing all stick-built and all modular, I think first of all revolves around what do we need to get done, what's the board's priority? And I think the board's priority is to get the work done. We need to look at how we can get that done most efficiently, most cost-effectively, and with the best quality.
The the question is also, can he rise to account foolish and save your kids? So I appreciate Chris, your comments about getting as much done of, and I'm not trying to be cute, just these just, but we could also bring in all all the, all all stuff on fields and just and just say we're done. And so we'd save a ton of money, just a ton of money.
It's not the discussion we're having.
I I I, we don't want to have this topic, I I think.
No one's not saying they don't want to have the discussion, it's just that you've digressed into a different area. I think what we're trying to do is figure out a way where we can get the highest and best use of the money.
And quality, and quality.
And quality, highest and best includes quality.
Yes.
Of of the money that the bond has afforded us.
Yes.
And I think everyone here has mentioned quality of of workmanship, of construction of the buildings themselves, of the of the final outcome. And, you know, so I, you know, we're, I would, my guess is we won't all agree on every issue on the uh on the list. We're not spending the time and knowledge that you have, you know, the the day in and day out. So to some extent, we bring our own thoughts forward, but we also rely on, you know, the the background work that that you've performed and are and is ongoing.
So what we will be doing at Baywood is we we do have some potential um layouts of the campus, of the new campus, whether it be stick-built or modular, so we will be working with that school site, teachers, parents, um staff there, principal, right? About that part of it. So at least we can get kind of that schematic design fi- finalized, so that once we do, and the board is able to make that decision, we'll be able to jump right on it and kind of hand that over to the architect and move forward, right? So um so that will be something we work in the fall. So Phase One is really taking that current campus, moving it over to the other side of campus, right? As well as then knocking down the current building, putting fields there, blacktop there as replacement. Phase Two, which you'll see is part of it, goes, actually goes to the multi-purpose room, renovate the multi-purpose room, kitchen, roofs, HVAC, finishes, you know, those types of things. Again, it's more of a light mod, it's relatively, you know, it's not that, that building's not that old, right? But there's still some modernization in that building that would be part of the Phase Two, okay?
You know, I just want to point out something that I have, I noticed last, through our last, through Measure D, that I just want to, I know there are many people here watching today, but that was really meaningful to me, was all the meetings you had with staff and community and students and, you know, various, everyone who's involved in our in our schools and and gathering their input from everything to design to furniture used in the classrooms, and I I I think that's great.
I think that's great too. Did we do any modular buildings in the last bond construction?
Um no, we just brought in temporary quarters.
Thanks.
But there was not a need to at that site, at either site at this point. Now, what I will tell you is we're going to be taking the portables off of San Luis Fiscal High School in particular. Um and depending on that enrollment at that school, where we actually have some growth, there may, there may be a conversation where we want to replace or put some modulators down or stick-bills um next to the old gym there where there's current portables. So all the permanent classroom buildings now, we're all set, ready to go, kids are in, those types of things. Um again, more of a high, they have more physical classrooms than needed there, right? Um so they're 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 fine in terms of space, they're going to have extra space when we're done with Measure Measure D. But Slow High would be the one where there's a potential of having to build another classroom wing, um where that conversation, Mr. Bonden, could come up in the future. So any other questions about Baywood, kind of where we're at? Okay? Would would you like to ask the public for each site as we go or in, what do you think?
Yeah, I do, and is this, are you, I, but I also want to check, we have this, are you looking for um uh board approval as a whole?
So the variant, I'm going to ask you to approve the delivery methods for each of the projects. This one we, is a to-be-determined, so this is a part of the list.
All right, so this one is not an action item.
At this point, not an action item. I just wanted to share where we're at and make sure the public, like, knows that we're not just forgetting about Baywood.
Okay, thank you.
Right? So I want them to understand kind of where we're at, that we're still moving forward.
Thank you. So at this time, I will go to the public to see if anyone has any questions or comments on um our discussion so far. Ms. Dawson, I see no hands up, do you? All right.
No hands up.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Bishop's Peak Elementary School. And I hope that, does the Google Earth image help to be able to see that, okay?
You're documenting those Pacific Beach next.
Yeah, I'm going to ju, I'm going to go back to um. Which one did I give you?
It's okay, it's just.
Sorry, I'm going to get the monitor.
Oh, okay for that one, yeah. Let's um, let's let's skip PB and come back to that at the very end if we can. So we'll go to Bishop's Peak. Um so Bishop's Peak, you'll see at the top of that campus there, again, through Measure D, we read brand-new multi-purpose room, uh modernize the office, library spaces there, right? So you can see it's dirt now, but there's actually a multi-purpose room there. Um redid the asphalt on the campus, so what we're talking about doing at Bishop's Peak and the plan for Phase One is taking all of those old, old portables and portable bathrooms at the top of that campus, the top of this picture. We're going to take four of them and we're going to put them on the blacktop for tent housing. Go ahead, throw it up. So you, Mr. Bonden is showing you kind of the the design, what will happen. So this is Phase One, we're taking four of the portables that at the bottom, so four of the older portables, we'll paint them, put new roof on it, clean it up for temporary housing, because we're going to need them throughout the phases of of Bishop's Peak, because they don't have enough classrooms once we take those top ones away. Um so those four portables will be moved down as tent housing. And then at the top, you'll see, we're going to be putting in a four-modular classroom building along with a modular restroom, okay? The positive thing about the modular, that I'll say it sometimes, because sometimes we'll say, why do we get the modulars? Why do we, what, how come we're not having permanent construction, those types of things, right? Well, the benefit of the modular is that we're able to actually, it's thirteen hundred square foot, it's got the restroom built in. It's, you you know, it's kind of set up, again, when you look at them, as I showed the board, they look like a permanent classroom building. Honestly, they're going to look exactly the same as the current classrooms that are at Bishop's Peak now, when it's when it's put in. But the the staff is going to be able to look at and help change the, you know, kind of have that have that uh input into it. When we go to like Sitchimer later and we talk about those current TK classrooms or K classrooms, that those are only, because they're physical, they're only eleven hundred square foot. I I can't make them any bigger, right? So there's some, there's some positives that come out of these modulars versus, again, just the normal portable, like the ones we're replacing at Bishop's or at Del Mar or Monarch Grove. These will be much nicer, bigger facilities for them to use, okay?
Why, does does each modular have a restroom?
Um they don't have to, because these are TKK classrooms, which is kind of our priority, right? So these programs, they will, we will have one in there, one or two. Um some of the layouts allow you to have two classrooms on each side and have bathrooms in between. So you could have multiple stalls, so one class could use the whole stall and then the other class could at a separate time, right? Instead of just having a one bathroom for the kids to use, they can, so there's different layouts that we're going to be bringing forward to staff here in the fall when they come back and, hey, what do you think? What would you like? Getting their input on a kind of those those final decisions, okay? So this project, the first thing that we'll do is the tent housing, we'll move those portables over. Then we will be putting the modular units in and bathroom, okay, from a phasing standpoint. And then we'll move the current uh classes out of the current TKK rooms over to the modulators, right? And then we will um go into the current TKK permanent building and modernize that facility. So really, three different projects. So Mr. Bonden, delivery method for this is what, why?
So delivery method, so we kind of narrow that to different delivery methods, uh lease-leaseback and design-build. So advantage of lease-leaseback, select on quality, performance and price. Uh design-build is low, low bid basically. Also with lease-leaseback, uh what comes with that is we can do pre-construction services, which is going to be very useful when we have multiple uh phases to this project and to the single project being coordinating with the modular or portable company with the contractor, make sure that runs efficiently, it takes a lot of time and scheduling. The other piece of that is the pre-construction services we can bring on the contractor early during the design phase, which will allow us to uh work out a lot of the, any issues that would arise with, you know, do a low bid. So it's beneficial that way. So for for Bishop's Peak, we've chosen lease-leaseback for those reasons.
We're recommending to you.
Yes.
The choice of lease-leaseback. Yes.
Let me clarify that, sorry.
And so the reasons you'll see on the sheet that I gave you, the seven packet, right? So kind of a list of those things. So, you know, it's really, we're talking about almost three different bids for this one phase of work, right? So there'll there'll be a a amount of work or to get those portables ready to try to do the temporary classrooms. Then there's going to be, you you know, bids and work for the actual modular setup, right? The infrastructure, the groundwork, those types of things. And then there'll be another bid for the actual. And then there'll be another bid for the actual, um, classroom building modernization. So having one contractor onboard who kind of helped facilitates that for the school district makes a lot of sense. And that's what you're gonna see as we go through these, the, the phase one projects that are kind of multifaceted, multiple projects, potential multiple bids. We're, we're recommending lease leaseback.
Okay.
For the projects that are, one project, start to finish, Pacific Beach High School potentially, right? Where it's just, hey, one project, build it, done. We, we've recommended design bid build. Because at the end of the day, that's probably from, uh, we're gonna get the, the best price out of the design bid build work, okay? Now it's still, lease leaseback is still a low bid situation, right? So you put an RFQP, uh, quote, price for Bishop's Peak Elementary School. We get bids back, they've been their general conditions, they've bid their pre-construction services, they did their profit margin, their insurance rates, those types of things. So we still are gonna get this little bid, right, for, for that work from the contractor. But you still have to then go out and get bids after that, right? So it's a little bit different in that scenario, Mary.
Well, I, were you reading my mind? I was thinking.
We're discussing, yeah.
I was thinking for Mr. Clausen's benefit and for my refresher, could you, um, just briefly describe what lease leaseback is?
So yeah, so it, it's, it's a type of delivery method, Harold Freeman is here, so we are, our, Los Alamos Attorney can help me out. But Harold, if I mess it up, you can jump in and help me out. But, um, basically it's a, it's a construction delivery method where you, um, this is a school district, hire a contractor. And they come in and they literally like, they lease the ground and do the work for you. And when the work is done, you close the lease, okay? This, this, uh, method of contracting became problematic. Cause what was happening is like here for us, we have three phases potentially Bishop's Peak Elementary School. Phase one, phase two, phase three. Well, what was happening in the school districts is, uh, they would award a contract for phase one. And then they would just give phase two to that same contractor. And then phase three to that same contractor.
Who held the lease.
Right? Or even if you set up a new lease. So what we found, what, and what the court said, that's illegal, you can't do that. So, so we would be, one DSA package, right, for all of these projects, we would get a lease leaseback contractor, they would get phase one. When phase two comes along and we have a new DSA package, we will be doing an RFQP for the next phase of that project. Depending on whether we need portable replacements, stick build or modular for the current, uh, site, you know, rest of the portables on Bishop's Peak. We would be then doing another RFQP potentially for that project.
So each, each phase is considered a standalone.
Lease.
Lease.
Yes.
Why do you need a lease, is it?
It's just part liability, insurance or?
I mean, why not just say, I'm hiring you to do a project on land that I own and I'm obviously sending the land to you?
Harold, do you wanna help me out with that one?
I'm back. Hi. I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
But why is it a lease? Why don't we just hire?
Why do you have to do the work?
Yeah.
Got it, so with, with lease leaseback, which had been a really popular method that school districts used. It's, it's purely a lease because that's what the education code says is how you go about doing it. So the, the legislature created this exception to traditional public bidding. Where you could go out and find somebody essentially to partner with. And use this lease, leaseback method where you lease the underlying property them, to them. And then they build and lease you the building that they're building. And the payments that you're making them are basically their construction progress payments. It, it's purely a statutory creation. The legislature and the courts have cracked down on that because, uh, as Ryan pointed out, there were a lot of abuses where people were not quite following the process. And they really tightened up the procedure a lot where now you have to have a competitive process, this RFP, RFQ, to find someone. But they left intact this notion of lease, leaseback. What, what the courts said, or at least one significant appellate court said, is that this is really a financing vehicle. And if you go back in the origins of this law, what it was really intended to do is you didn't have money to build your school. So you leased it to a contractor who fronted the money for you. And you paid them back up to over a 30-year period while you used the building. So it's this historical vestige that we still do it through leases. Um, I can't say it makes the most sense in the world, but it's what the legislature gave us.
We have to do projects this way? I mean, it seems like you're presenting it as a choice compared to something else.
So you, so we can do one of three ways, right? So we can design bid build, which is your normal, hey, so we would do the temporary housing, we would do a design bid build, we'd put it up to low bid. Then we would do the modular, uh, work for the modulars to come in, we would do a design bid build for that. And then we would do a design bid build contract, you know, put that out for the, uh, modernization of the building.
So why is this better?
Because that is, um, I'll jump in, so. From a.
Why is it better? Because there's, there's, like I said, we're picking the contractor on quality, performance and price, one. Two is the contractor is onboard for the coordination through this project. It's not us as designed for doing separate, separate, uh, design bid build projects, then we're coordinated ourselves. So putting on the contractor's time allows them to, they can't come back and call us, we're holding the, holding the progress up to do the project, right? And then it costs money because it, the coordination's not done correctly.
So it's really coordination issue, we have multiple projects at the site that one person do.
So what's the difference between getting a contractor that holds this lease and runs the whole program versus us contracting it ourselves, is that what you're saying?
Well, partially.
Partially?
Yeah.
But then there's also the advantage, we can do pre-construction services and bring them on early, do the value engineering and go through the plans with us as we design that. Uh, and that helps catch anything that, that the.
That's key.
Right.
So why can't we just hire a contractor?
Because there's no, there, there is no, that's not legal.
This is the mechanism in education to hire a contractor.
Yeah.
Well, we can have a market tech, just like, more tech.
So there, there's not a method to do that. So design build is the other one, right? Where you're telling me, where you can kind of pay, here's the site, you, you bring back kind of plans for me and then we'll do that. So we're, for us, for this method part of it, again, you, you're talking about multifaceted, you're talking about kids being on campus at the same time. So really lease leaseback helps us to keep the contractor on the hook. And make sure that this is all like happening at the same time, so they're gonna move the portables, they're gonna set them up, they're gonna, while they're doing that, they're gonna be doing the land, they're gonna make sure the infrastructure is set up. It just really, it just ties them more into the process versus, okay, here's the plan. You guys all bid it, design bid build, right? And come back to me with, you know, with a, with a number to, to make that happen.
So when you do it that way, you're open to a lot of change orders, right? Cause then the contractor hasn't reviewed the plans as you go through. And the first thing they're gonna do is like, well, that's not the plans, here's a change order. And then you can't control the change orders because it's not the plan. But he's part of the design process through, he's catching those, so there isn't a lot of change orders when you get to construction. And it's also optimized, as I wrote my note here, optimizing scheduling.
So honestly, lease leaseback is hiring a contractor. It's just a method, it's a built right up to you do.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to create the building of a house, I tend to know it's way simple, but you'd hire an architect and you'd hire a contractor and then build your house and you wouldn't hire yourself, it's the contractor would. And I just assumed we were doing that on the site bid build, but I.
Yeah, so the difference would be, you're not just building a house, you're gonna build a farm in a year and a half from now and you're gonna put in some temporary housing to live in while you're doing it. So there's, it, it's, you know, there's, there's multiple phases in these as we go through. Now, I will tell you that you're gonna see three projects, we feel are pretty straightforward. Hey, we're gonna get the design right, they're full guts, so PB, Sintimer and Los Rancho's, those phase one projects, design bid build. We feel good about just putting that plan on the street, there's not multiple phases, like we'll get the lowest price bid and we'll move forward with it. But these ones that are multifaceted, multiple projects, everything flows through. It's nice to be able to get that contractor onboard, have them part of the process, have them part of the plan moving forward, right? Uh, and, and ensure that the documents are correct and it just, it's more of the team effort. And it's almost like, right, like you said, it's like, that's a hiring, it's like hiring contractors. You just have to do it through this lease leaseback, you know, process that is legally, you know, acceptable.
But you say that we can't, we're precluded from, um, awarding the subsequent phases, just awarding them to that contractor?
Yes, so the next DSA project, so again, this whole phase one, all the three things I talked about right now. We have an architect that's doing all of that work for all three of those projects. The temp housing, the, the new modules, as well as the modernization, okay? One architect, that's one DSA project that's gonna go with. So that one DSA project, we can get a lease leaseback contractor and they can do all those things. Now the next DSA project, and this is again, working with Artie Sandberg, our attorney, who the, the board has met before. You, you cannot just automatically give the next one to that, you have to re-RFQP it out and that's the, the legal process.
So.
Does it mean the lease duration is equal to the phase? Is that how you remember?
What's that?
So the lease duration is equal to the first phase and you just sever a lease for the second phase?
It won't exist, yeah.
So two questions, um, one, has it, Greenfield's gone bankrupt several times. So if they had gone bankrupt during construction, has this school district ever lost their property through a lease lease? Is it possible?
No.
Yeah, it's not possible.
I mean, I don't know, but no.
I mean, I've only got personal leases, so I don't, okay. Then twice now, I've heard that lease leaseback has better quality. That's, both of these, so, so I, you know, I mean, that's just, I don't, I just, that's just some of my feeling. And then, um, isn't there a cost associated each time? So we have to go out with three bids at a lease leaseback, isn't there a cost for staff and time and other costs to do the three bids?
That's on them.
What?
That's on the contractor.
No, no, no.
Are you talking about the next phases?
Yeah, each phase.
So each phase, yes, it will take.
Oh, yeah, 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 each phase, sure.
So is it not, I've heard of some type sites or some projects maybe where they hire an engineer, they hire management, they hire Ron Holcomb or whatever. And so you do it, you do a design build build or whatever it is.
Design build?
Yeah, you do a design build. And so you lose that planning with the contractor, but you could be doing it with the same, another person, so you don't have to do it each time, bid it out.
Pros and cons, design build really for big, huge sites, like we felt at San Luis Obispo, it's the Morro Bay High made more sense. At those, these smaller school sites, not as much.
So you're, another thing to just consider is, did something like that, you're locked in with that architect the whole time?
No, engineer advisor is what I'm thinking about.
Well, if you're doing design build.
Yeah.
Right, it's the contractor, architect, their team.
Contractor, architect, their team.
I, yes, I appreciate that, but part of it was the planning of the phases and moving.
Yes, okay.
And there could be somebody that's just responsible.
You, you'll notice in the phase two budget, I deleted the architects purposefully. So Chris and I have been really clear with the architects that, um, next phase work will be based on their performance of phase one.
Which is, I like that.
Very, I have not awarded Baywood yet. Cause we're getting a really good idea of the architects and their work with phase one. And who we want to have this biggest project and focus with coming up, right? So we're, you know, we're basically holding people accountable, uh, as we move through these, these phase one projects, okay? So phase one also is the canopy between the kindergarten room and the, the two permanent classrooms, okay? So that is the phase one.
Sure, that area right there.
Okay, those are the phase one projects that the board has approved thus far, that we are moving forward with. Phase two is going into the permanent classroom wings, the two permanent classroom wings, go back. Those wings right there and, and doing complete modernization of those buildings. Again, like I said, exterior, interior, HVAC, roofing, air conditioning, bathrooms, all of those things, right? That's phase two, okay? Phase three is once all those classrooms are done and the new, um, new modulars and the new K wing, all of those are done. We will do, hey, let's look at the campus, let's look at the program, where are we at? Cause what I can tell you right now is they do not need seven new portables to come back onto that campus. They don't have the number of kids there or the number of classes necessary for that. Now, they may need three, they may need four, but phase three, and you'll see this, which is cool, is, okay, phase three is what are we gonna do with those portables on each campus? And it could be a modular potential, it, it could, ensuring, hey, let's just leave the infrastructure there for the future. Or let's build a stick build building to tie it, okay? So that's phase three for, for Bishop's Peak. But again, a recommendation to the board, delivery method for this school site is lease leaseback, okay?
So when we look, we're saying we don't need, um, a modular or possibly a stick build. Um, are we looking at how rapidly the student population is dropping? Have we been?
Yes.
Okay, and so are we gonna get use of all this new stuff? Or are we ultimately looking at a school with 150 kids?
No, I would say yes for this. And I, again, that's why we're investing in the, we're investing in the permanent classroom structures first, right? So you'll see this, the last phase is what are we doing with portables, whether we need them or not, okay?
I guess the, I guess the question that, that I'm gonna ask is, are we gonna need this school site in 10, 20, 30 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
I don't envision, um, us not needing any of our city school sites anytime in the future. And obviously even the coast, we're down to the three, right? Uh, Baywood, Monarch Grove, Del Mar, I, I don't, I, I, I don't see us closing any school sites.
So we looked at the demographics, so.
Yeah, we have our demographic report study that came out like before we went forth to Measure C, stable, right? So.
Thank you.
So that's Bishop's Peak, okay? Next one is Seal Smith?
Can I, some of the questions I'm asking, I know have been answered in the past.
Huh?
But this is where we're starting to prove, we can't go backwards from this point, that's, so I'm still, that's why I'm asking some questions.
It's okay, they're great questions, it's good.
I just, I just, I didn't explain.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ryan, I really like how you structured, you and Chris structured this, phase one, phase two, phase three.
Yeah.
Because that will ensure we have the money to get those things we absolutely promised to the community down.
Yeah, and, and, and again, yes, right? So again, we are in such a better, I can't overemphasize how, what a better place we are in as a school district with Chris and myself, with Measure C than we were with Measure D. I mean, we are really just from get go, front loading it, I plan on having a measure, uh, you know, the board will have a phase one, phase two, phase three budget very soon. You're gonna see what the next eight years lays out to be, right? And again, from a conservative standpoint, and as we go through, the board will be able to make decisions. And, and we'll have better knowledge about what, what we can do with phase three, because maybe we can do more than we thought at the end of this, right? Again, we still have needs here at the district office, we still have needs at BGT, we still have needs at high schools, we, I mean, there's still a lot of needs, right? Outside of what we're, the board has prioritized for these Measure C funds. So my hope is that we can encompass some of those as we go through this. So Seal Smith?
Can I?
Yeah.
Can you clarify what we're approving today?
So today I'm asking you to just approve the construction, moving forward with the construction delivery methods for the particular sites that we're doing phase one projects for right now. So at the very end, you're gonna see a list of the sites and the delivery methods.
So lease leaseback versus design build by site for phase one?
Design bid build for phase one projects, okay? And really, again, it comes down to two things. Lease leaseback we're recommending for schools that have multiple projects, phases, you know, uh, Lagoon Middle School, Los Osos Middle School, over two, those are gonna be like projects over two years. Then we're gonna do the roofs in the summer in coordination of that. So it's not, you're not gonna get a contractor who's gonna come in and say, hey, I'll design bid, you know, I'll put a bid in for this two years worth of work today. Not knowing what the cost is gonna be in the future, you know, it's, it'll be very difficult for them to do that. But I versus lease leaseback, that's a good venue to have a longevity, multiple projects, multiple bids, you know, phasing part of it, um.
So really you're just asking us to provide important whether the complexity of each project is compatible with the delivery mechanism you're recommending? And the scope of today's discussion is not budget or, you know, should the classroom go here, there, or anything other than combined?
Right, basic.
So my understanding, sorry, my understanding is the way that we build it, the delivery method does affect costs because it affects the bidding process. Because design build bill.
Design bid build.
Design bid build is, is one shot boom and you're doing it, it sounds to me like that's possible cost saving there. So that's why, that's why I'm saying we're at the point now, where we literally are talking about approving dollars.
Oh.
Okay, um, and this is really petty. I know somebody now that has an electric car and finding a charging station in this town is nearly impossible. So I just wanna make sure that I have all the bids or whatever included multiples, thank you.
So part, part of our constructions, we have to add charging stations.
Okay, thanks.
So at all sites, they will have charging stations.
But I, I plan on, I plan on having some architects come forward, just so you know, at a future meeting with the board. To talk about all the energy, climate friendly things that we have to incorporate. to talk about all the energy, climate-friendly things that we have to incorporate into all of our Measure C projects. So we'll kind of, we'll hit that.
Thank you, sorry, we've had each time here.
So I just wanted to say, it sounds like, and I, I understand Mr. Buckland's concerned about, you know, some dollars here and there, but I, to me, and I would, I need to be corrected if I'm wrong, the information I'm seeking is that one of the issues with design bid build versus lease lease back also would be a matter of some control. So lease lease back, we have more control than having one person committing to all three phases with one organization, one company or something, that we lose some control and some, and by that, I also, I think that also includes some accountability, because we can say, thank you for your work on Phase 1, we decided to go in a direction of Phase 2.
So I hear that, and my concern then is, if we're so concerned about dollar amounts that we're gonna make some decisions on modular, all of that, then I think there's some concern about terms like more control over quality, more control over something else, more, more accountability, and yet we're choosing on some sites, including Pat Beach, which is a whole new school, right? To go design, build, build.
Design bid build.
I'm sorry, design bid build, why not just do all of them?
And so we've, and that's why we place reasons next to each other.
I appreciate that.
Why we're moving forward by.
I appreciate that, but the reason to.
And really, yeah, two things really, one is that, again, they're, they're both, I don't want you to, they're both trying to get the best price, right? No matter what we do, lease lease back, design bid build, they're both competitive processes to get the best price budget-wise. But then there's the actual doing the work part of it, both on our staff end, to be able to get that accomplished, as well as working with the contractor and being able to do multiple construction projects on a site while school is happening. And so the delivery method we're picking is really, or recommending to you, is the one that we feel is going to best help us accomplish this work while having kids on site, getting things done, um, and, and then there's other projects like PV where we're building a next to it, it doesn't, those, those aren't necessarily the same concerns. So let's go ahead and just focus on getting the best price for that project, right? And let's, let's move forward with it.
So I guess what I'm saying is, is if we could stop making it to, that, uh, a dividing point, uh, or criteria, quality, control, accountability, and just what you're saying, which is, you know, phases and all that, because as I hear quality and those things, I'm hearing less concern about the quality of PV. I mean, that's literally what I'm hearing.
Right.
No, I, that's not what I hear at all.
We're not using, we haven't used the term design bid build, we haven't used the word quality once. We've only used it when we're talking about.
Well, it's incumbent upon, you know, we, in, with design bid build, you have an architect designer. Mark, don't, you know, give me your heavy size, listen to me. I listen to you a lot.
No, I get shut down a lot, so go ahead.
You have an architect design it. We have to participate in that process to be sure that everything we want is in it. We then go out for competitive bid on it. We take the lowest responsible bid. So ensuring that the project is high-quality is incumbent upon the architect and the district during the design process. There's nothing low-quality about that design.
Or the product.
So your point was?
My point was, is every time we create a comparison, not saying it's good or bad, the term high-quality isn't applied to L, the LDB, okay? That term has not come up with the DBB. So I'm just asking either to stop using the term, or tell, tell me what the, the difference is in quality, okay? I think it's a fair question, Marilyn, I'm not gonna ask it again.
Lease lease back.
It's okay, it's, it's okay.
Well, I, I just can't explain it all to you. I mean, we, we have other people who can't explain it. Harold's here, Harold, can you explain the difference between
I'm not worried about, I'm not.
the quality of lease lease back and design bid build?
Marilyn, I'm not questioning whether the quality's gonna be good or bad. I'm questioning the use of the term as one of the definite, one of, this is why we're using LDB at this site. The term, the comment has always been, started with the word quality.
So people may have misspoken, Mark, people may have missed.
Well, that's all, like, all I asked was to change, to stop using it.
I just call, my terminology includes quality in everything, I suppose.
And I appreciate that, but these are the guys that are advising.
And so that's why I.
I can add something to that.
So I don't, it's okay, it's okay.
But go ahead, Chris, and have, you say you're shut down.
The, the quality is not pertaining to the buildings. The quality is the quality of the contractor.
Okay.
In, in this case, when we're talking lease lease back.
Yeah.
Because that is a selection process, part of the selection process for the lease lease back contractor. Is quality's considered on the contractor, the performance of the contractor's considered, and then the price is considered. Not, that's not the building, but as Marilyn said, we sit with the architect, we have our standards that we hand the architect, that we are updating constantly to make sure we get the quality we want. And then we're meeting with those architects right now, every other week, as we're starting this design process, to make sure the quality is there on every project, whether, whatever delivery method it is.
Yeah, yes.
So Seal Smith, um, Phase 1 projects right now is to bring in a TK. And this, in this case, a TK portable to match the two that we put in during Measure D, okay? So that will be kind of on the, um, on, on the bottom side of the current kindergarten playground there. I'm talking about the TK playground.
Oh, I'm sorry.
TK. Uh, Seal Smith. So, so what we'll do is we'll bring in the new TK, um, TK portable that will match the other two 1350, uh, you know, bathroom and those types of things. That'll tie in right at the bottom of that, so it'll be kind of a nice, kind of L right around the kindergarten playground for those classes. We're also bringing in two, um, portables right now, because this campus is pretty full. They're, they're using all of their site, they don't have extra portables like they did at Bishop's Peak. So, um, so we're gonna bring in two of our portals that we actually had, um, at Morave. We're gonna reuse them now at this site, right? And then the kindergarten classes, after the, the TK portal gets put in, the kindergarten wing, uh, which is above those, those portables there with the, Chris is showing you. Uh, we'll go in and we'll do a full gut modernization of that kindergarten wing. So they'll be using those tent housing while that's happening. We're also at the left of this, um, and I will tell you, at all of our elementary sites, we're also looking at childcare spaces. Okay, for the childcare programs, both before and after school. Um, in some ways, like at Hawthorne, it's actually gonna release some classroom space. So, hey, we'll give a portable to the childcare, and then they'll get their classroom space back on the campus. So there's a couple of those at Hawthorne in particular. But at this case, these are two of the most worn out, uh, well, I could go further with that conversation, but I mean, they, they're bad. Uh, tired, it's been like very, it's time, um, in some ways, almost embarrassing, honestly, when I walked through there recently again. And so the plan is to, at this campus, they have a pretty big at-school program, before-school program. So we're gonna take the two portables that are there, we're gonna have a one portable, again, different than modular, a portable building with a restroom for their smaller program, because they actually have childcare licensing regulations with, like, the TK kids, the four-year-olds. Um, so we're gonna do that as a one portable, and then we're gonna do a double portable next to it, in that same space area, um, for the, for the, the first through sixth grade students, because they can all be in one big space together. This then allows them to get out of the band room and the library and the multipurpose room and all the other things where, well, you know, when we add elementary athletics, and we add other programs through these campuses, right? They need a place to be. So this will be a great setup for them, they're very excited about the opportunity. We've also fronted these buildings near the front of the campus, or some way to where they can have kind of a, a parent drop-off, pickup area, right, that's not in the middle of the campus. Okay? So fencing, lockdown, rules and regulations, all of those things, security fence, and we're tying in as part of this, okay? So that is Phase 1 at Seal Smith. Phase 2, that goes into the permanent buildings, and again, with Measure D, they got a new bus drop-off, they got new office, um, new staff room, new nurses' office, right? All those things in the main middle building there. But we're gonna go into the other buildings now, and really do roofs and HVAC, including air conditioning. The exterior of those buildings was done in Measure D. But we are gonna do some light modernization inside the buildings. Um, oh, I should tell you too, with Phase 1, we're also doing all the restroom, the multi-combination restrooms on campus. And you'll see that with each of our school sites, that's kind of what we're hitting with Phase 1 projects. Um, it's, it's just something that's really great for kids, they have new restrooms, right? It's visible, quick, easy for them to see, right? So we'll be going through those as well.
My, what, what phase is the fencing?
That's right now.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's underway?
Yeah, so fields and fencing is kind of outside, we're already kind of moving forward with that. And again, at this campus, it's really just the, the field fencing, they already have the new, um, security fencing in the front.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
And Ryan, with the restrooms, Ryan and Chris, with the restrooms, are we including, um, gender-neutral restrooms?
Yes, as we go through. Not, not necessarily with this first multi-stall, right? Because these are the big multi-stall ones, the gender-neutral are the, the one-offs, second separate ones, right? That, so most of those sequel stall ones will be when we go in and modernize the, the main wings of classrooms.
Just wanna make sure.
Absolutely, throughout, we have all of that considered without, throughout, I should say. And so, so Phase 2 again is going into those permanent classroom wings, as well as the multipurpose room, uh, and kitchen modernization there, so kind of finishing that campus, um, all the permanent wings first. And then 3, Phase 3 is where, okay, now what are we gonna do with the portable, two portable wings on the campus? Okay? So again, this is a place, Mark, in particular, where we need to, where there's growth on the campus, those types of things, right? Where we need to consider this. Um, I do think that in the next five years, we're gonna have to have some conversations about enrollment at our schools. Uh, boundary conversations, right? In particular, we're seeing, uh, growth at Los Ranchos Elementary School. And we're, um, and really, some of those kids, we should be taking some of those kids and putting them at, uh, Sin City Elementary School, especially the neighbors that are right next to the town. Um, so that, that's a conversation we'll be having as we continue to look at enrollment, kindergarten enrollment each year and those types of things. Um, and really, that's because there's all the housing room that's happening in Sam's, as well. Um, so again, that third phase is that, is, is kind of the portables there. And again, are we putting new portables in, how many are we gonna put in? Is it gonna be modular, is it gonna be stick build, those kind of conversations, we'll go around that, okay? So because Seal Smith is this multiple phase.
So again, what I recommend, the lease lease back for that, that side.
Okay.
Okay. Next one, Del Mar. And again, I think the visual hopefully helps everyone kind of see what, what we're talking about. So at Del Mar Elementary School, uh, what we're doing is we're going to be, um, again, TKK priority-wise, uh, we're gonna be bringing in two modulars, uh, at Del Mar, and that's gonna go up, up by the multipurpose room area, right? Where, kind of where that dirt area is with the sheds there, as well as kind of the handball courts, that's where the two new classrooms are gonna go, okay? So we're gonna put those two new modulars in, 1350 square feet, restrooms all set up, ready to go for kindergarten. And then once those are in, we're gonna move the kindergarten classes into it, and we're gonna modernize the current kindergarten building, that's the, um, roof, HVAC. It needs, uh, it, it's actually a newer building, so some kind of light interior, uh, features with it, in terms of it. Again, we already painted that, this campus, Measure D. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll be doing some modernization of that. We're also gonna be doing all of the back multi, again, multi-stall restrooms throughout the campus. Uh, I mean, those are really old, really old in these wings. Um, and you're talking about, and really guts, because there's ADA accessibility issues, they're, they're, they're tight stalls, just all those things, right? And so we'll be updating those with this first phase. Um, campus-wide fire alarm needs to be done on this campus. Along with doing the decorative fencing, right now, we just put some chain link up for a kind of, you know, in, in-between time ride, just to, right, safety there, but we'll be going back now through with an architect and really just along the front during the decorative fencing, and because there's some ADA accessibility issues with this last permanent building, we'll be looking at those, right? And building in kind of that nice look like we have at Seal Smith, at Bishop's Peak, at, you know, Morave High School, and, you know, some of our, our, our other sites.
That's across the front.
Yeah, across the front.
But around.
It goes really multipurpose room, all the way around to the front of, of the campus.
With the balance, are we just doing chain link?
It's all ornamental.
That'll all be ornamental all the way around, the full front, that's what you'll see when you look at the front of the school.
So the chain link we put up will take down.
Okay, I, I understand, but then that's all across the front of the school, everything that you see from the street or if you're drawing your child. But the rest of the site.
Yeah, that's all already chain link, yes.
Chain link, okay.
Which is what we do on all of our sites. Okay? So then Phase 2 is, and again, this is a site where we have extra classrooms, extra portables right now. So there's not really a need for tent housing, okay? We'll be able to accommodate classrooms and modernization as we go through this. But Phase 2 then is going through the classroom wings that are there, so the four classroom wings. Again, we'll, we'll have already done the restrooms. Uh, and, and, uh, and again, some light modernization work at the current office, library, and those are in pretty good shape, right? Science room, the other permanent building is Phase 2, okay? So those are all built into the Phase 2 budget, including roofing, HVAC, those types of things, um, tied in. And really, the third aspect of this is, um, is, okay, at that point, what are now, we're gonna, what are we now going to do with the portable center there? And then I will tell you right now, the current enrollment, those will not be needed.
How many do they have?
Uh, one, two.
Four, five, six.
Plus he's got the two that are near the, the, you know, seven acres. So there will be, the infrastructure will remain for those, so to put more back. Um, the positive thing too, in future years, let's say eight, nine years from now, if, if all of a sudden, you know, we take those away, we get rid of them, and then we need housing, we can potentially use developer fees to bring back newer, um, individual facilities.
If it's related to growth.
Yes.
But, so you're talking about, we would still, we'd maintain the undergrounding for all of those, but we would get rid of those portables, that's a lot of space. What would you anticipate would go into that space?
I don't know. I'm sure they'll want a giant school garden or something, but.
Okay.
We won't like that, but I can assume.
Or a gaga ball pit or.
Right, yeah, I mean, this, this already, again, this, they already have a lot, I mean, they got a ton of lollipop already, so it's, it's to be determined, Marilyn, I don't know.
Is, is there any, is there any interest on this, if it'd be infusing this site more specifically to classrooms?
Um, other than putting, uh, seven or eight pickleball courts on?
Well, yeah.
No, that's.
I'm just thinking those, the two portals.
I mean, no, yeah, they would, they would love for us to make this a pickleball court, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I got it. I'm thinking actually the classroom sites, like Boys' and Girls' Club or something.
No. I mean, we have, the city Morave is already there, located on campus, right?
So are they in a board?
Before and after school, those type of things.
Right, are they in a board, one of those boards?
We'll see, yeah, the front building, right, or.
Do are they current? They are, okay, so that, I don't, seems to be maybe as collapsing.
Yeah. Again, our focus with Measure C will be to ensure that all of our campuses have the facilities they need, right? That's, let's get that accomplished first, and then we can think of other, I, you know, where, where we're moving forward. So again, from a delivery method standpoint.
Again, lease lease back recommendation.
Multiple bids, multiple projects throughout the site.
Multiple bids, this would be phasing for that, would be with the, uh, ornamental fence, modulars, or portables, modulars.
And, and again, I will say, what I like about the strategy here is that as the next few years unfold, and as we become more aware of the changing landscape of education, and where we think the needs will be, whether it's Boys' and Girls' Club, whether it's a tech center, whatever it might be, right? That allows us to then think about it, and when Phase 3 comes, if there are resources, or if there's state access to grants, all of a sudden now, that becomes a logical next, next piece. So it's the next few years, as we evolve, as we determine the landscape of public education and what the needs might be, this, well, the Phase 3 is that place, where those ideas can come in.
If we have the money. So Hawthorne Elementary School, um, again, this first Phase 1, which has been more approved, is really the, just.
Right.
Oh, sorry, I was, sorry. Just like in terms of procedure today, I think we lose Marilyn at 10 to 1, and you're gonna lose me on it, or I'm gonna lose one of those forms.
I can hang you on it.
You're gonna lose two to one, yeah, but yeah, we have some action items.
Well, well, I, I just wanna make sure, if the purpose of this is to propose your delivery mechanism, can we limit the discussion to things that would affect the delivery mechanism? Because, like, I find the layout super interesting, and I, I love to my own advice, I probably ask all kinds of questions about design school. Because like I find the layout super interesting, and I've left my own advice, I probably ask all kinds of questions about design school, but least leaseback versus design.
I mean, I can go quickly quicker through that aspect of it, but that's okay.
Do we have any components that we think the recommendations are not? We're not going to, we get to the point of are there things to discuss around least leaseback versus design bid build? Seems like the best use of the next 40 minutes.
So we just.
If you guys disagree, feel free to.
No, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about our action items as well. You know, we will, you know, I don't want us to lose a forum, and even if Chris were here, we have to have a physical forum in order to have votes.
Would you, would you accept a motion?
No. Well, I want to know how many sites do we?
So really, so again, and we can come back to more of this, really, if you just go to the very end, Chris.
I think we understand why you're.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, I honestly, it's because if you have time, I I simply just wanted to, again, as a reminder, walk you through Phase one, let the public remember this will be approved.
Yeah. I think it's also looking at plans.
We don't have to do it right now, that's fine. Really, the end of the day, if we just go to the list, Chris.
Also, I don't want you to get to the end today, not having the privilege to do this stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, we have some other items.
So maybe you could just explain to us very quickly why you chose to.
So you go, go to the, go to the.
Design bid build on the ones that you did?
So here, so this is, so here's the thing, what we just talked about. The ones at the top that are that are least leaseback, those are all projects that are multiple projects on one site. They're going to require potentially multiple bids. They're going to be over extended periods of time, you know, potentially two years worth of projects that we're talking about, right? So it's going to take multiple bids, contract coordination. It, they are all projects where it will, it will be beneficial to the school district to bring in the contractor early to have these conversations with the site, how are we going to do these projects, how this is going to unfold. But the three that we decided for design bid build were Sincheimer, which is really one project. It's the TKK wing, it's doing, it's just doing the one project worth of work, right? Which is basically, you know, modernizing exterior, interior of those campuses or of that campus. No, no need for temp housing, no need for anything else accomplished, you know, to accomplish with that. Los Rancho, same thing.
Also, the recommendation, there's no reconfiguration of the room. It's really the room stays the same shape, no lighting walls, so less, less coordination, less air.
Less potential for for change orders, those types of things, as we go through. And then the Los Rancho, same exact thing. So that is the permanent Kinder Classroom building, that's the oldest on that site. That's the first thing that we're we're going after and and looking at, right? And again, because TKK is so important, it's one of our priorities, and so that was another one. And then again, we said PB, because it is a ground up, and we talked about this a lot with architects and kind of getting feedback from people, but it really just made sense to to go ahead, because it's ground up all the way, to 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 just do a one project, we're going to go for it, to do design bid build.
So at this time, I'd like to go to the public to see if anyone has any questions or comments.
And for the public's sake too, I want them to know, we have not forgotten about Teach Elementary School, okay?
It's on the charge.
So so you'll see, right, Baywood and Teach, Teach as well, right? So again, Sloka will be moving out of that campus, Phase two projects will basically be modernizing that that Teach campus, okay? So you can see that in the documents, you can see the budgets, you can see the work that's going to be done. But just for the public to understand that that is something that's moving forward, that we we have planned it for and and will be moving toward in the future.
Have you landed on delivery method or?
Not yet, we haven't done the Phase two yet, just to see where it wraps. So what I announced to the board today is is approval of of the delivery methods for these potential projects that have been shown today, that have been reviewed. And what will happen at this, if should the board approve these today, is we will begin then to move forward. Again, the design bid build will not, will not be put out on the street until we actually have the design. The least leaseback, we will start in the month of August. And my goal is to put out probably two projects at a time. One for staffing to get it done, but also what happens is we do a least leaseback contract. That becomes public knowledge, everyone will see what the price, what the general conditions, what the, what they're asking for. And then the next month, we'll put out two more. And so there there's going to be, that will cause a lot of competition amongst contractors who want to get this work, instead of doing them all at one time.
How long do you anticipate? I'm assuming you're going to get DSA approvals on all of these?
Not not to get the least leaseback going, because we can do a pre-construction services agreement first.
Okay, and they are.
The design bid build, you have to have the DSA plan stuff.
So how long does it take to get something through DSA or SPAC, yes?
Six months.
And so this is, we just, for clarity purposes, we will be voting on the delivery methods as presented with the with the understanding that both Baywood and Teach will be, come back to us, are not part of what we're voting on today, because they'll come back to us.
Yes.
Gather. So at this time, I'd ask if there's anyone from the public, which you comment on this?
I don't see any hands up.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson, so we could have a motion, Mr. Buckman?
I I make a motion to approve the delivery methods as presented.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Buckman?
Hi.
Oh, Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that motion passes 4-0, we have lost Mr. Unger on the way, but we still have a forum. So we will move on to our next item, which is the notices, the CEQA notices of exemption.
So yeah, we have, I'm going to ask Harold Freeman, our attorney, to give the board kind of a quick rundown, very fast, about the CEQA process and why we're asking the board to approve these notices of exemption today for the schools that we just talked about for Phase one projects. Go ahead, Harold.
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, and I can be fairly brief with this. The this is really a moment of crossing Ts and dotting Is for the board. California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, as you'll hear us refer to it, requires that when you do certain projects, that you have to do analysis under CEQA. And that can fall into a lot of different categories, anywhere from doing a simple checklist called an initial study, all the way up to doing a full environmental impact report. But the key is that you may be exempt, and typically with a lot of school district properties, you are exempt under CEQA for particular projects that you do. In this case, for all of the projects that you just heard about, they're generally going to fall into one of four different exemptions under CEQA. The the four are, and they they're referred to by class. So the first one is Class One, that has to do with when you're basically replacing existing facilities. So if you're taking out a portable and you're replacing it with a permanent classroom, that could fall within that Class One category. Also, landscaping maintenance, demolition of small, non-significant structures, additions to existing structures that don't greatly add their to their footprint. So that's Class One. Class Two is replacement or reconstruction of existing school facilities at the same capacity. So again, when you're taking out a portable classroom, for example, and putting in a permanent classroom with the same capacity, that would generally fall under that exception or that exemption. Class Eleven, which is construction of minor structures accessory to existing existing facilities, can be small parking lots, fields, on sign, on-premise signs, sort of smaller things. And then really, the big one that we usually look at is the Class 14 exemption, which is minor additions to schools, and that's defined as work that you're doing on schools that does not increase the capacity of the school by more than 10 classrooms or 25%, whichever is greater. So when we look at the projects that have been discussed today, they all seem to fit within all four of those exemptions. There are some that I know will be coming back to you, like Bay was discussed. But for the others and the specific notices of exemption you have here, they all appear to be exempt. The reason that you're being asked to look at a notice of exemption is that under CEQA, you can be exempt without adopting a notice of exemption. And again, exemption just means you don't have to do any further CEQA analysis. When the board acted back in March to adopt its projects that it adopted, these Phase one projects, it was already exempt at that point in time, but it didn't file anything to basically document that. And the reason that we suggest you do the notices of exemption, even though they're not required, they're just allowed, is twofold. One is that it informs the public of the basis of why you think that you're exempt under CEQA. And two, and perhaps the more common reason for doing it, is that if somebody disagrees and feels you should have done greater CEQA review and you've not filed a notice of exemption, they have 180 days from your approval of the project to challenge your decision under CEQA. If you file a notice of exemption, which gets recorded with the county recorder's office, and we often also suggest you file it with the the state clearinghouse, the Office of Planning and Research as well, just to be built and suspenders because you're a local entity for some purposes and state for other, that then starts a 35-day clock for any challenge suggesting that you should have done more under CEQA. So that's all the way of saying to where we get where we get, which is the conclusion's been reached with our consultation with staff that the projects you have before you on the notices of exemption are all in fact exempt under CEQA. The one last thing I'll say, and then I'm happy to take questions, is that everything you do under CEQA, you're supposed to do before you approve a project, with the one exception that if you're going to do a notice of exemption, you're only allowed to do it after you approve the project. And there's nothing in the law that says it has to be the next day, the next month, or the next year. So in that sense, this is timely, it would have been timely three months ago, it would be timely three months from now. But doing it today, again, gives the public notice of the reasoning on this and also serves to cut off that time period for any challenges under CEQA.
So today, we're asking the board to approve the notices of exemption for each of the school sites that have Phase one projects on.
So I have a question. When we file that notice, then does it need to be approved by CEQA?
No, see, it's you're the ones who are approving it. You're the final approval authority, it just gets recorded after that.
Okay, so we're, stop, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
I do not see any hands up.
You're supposed to be specific about the projects, that's why I'm holding off on Baywood and Teach. And so, and the board really hasn't approved, formally approved Phase two yet, so that's why we're, we're just doing the projects that you see in front of you today.
Okay, so I will move approval of the CEQA notices of exemption at the sites noted under Agenda Item 5.03.
I'll second. All in, Ms. Roger?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll be in contact for next steps.
That sounds good.
Okay, so next is 5.05, Measure C 22, approval of geotechnical engineering service providers.
Actually, we have one before that.
Oh, sorry, to the very bottom, thank you, Madam Clerk. 5.04, approve appointments to the state water contractors advice.
So this is, if we want to have a voice in this conversation in the future, we do need to have the board officially vote members. And so what we're asking the board today is to select Chris Bonin to potentially be the member of that committee with Steve Stewart as his backup, who is our head of maintenance.
Would we anticipate that this would take a considerable amount of Mr. Bonin's time?
No.
No?
I I'm already attending the Zooms, and it's not a lot for me to say. I'm a this big compared to everybody else in the topic.
Okay, so it wouldn't further burden you, given that you have Measure C and all your other, okay?
We're just looking for approval of that.
I understand. Is there anyone from the public with any questions about this item?
I do not see any hands up.
Thank you. All right, so we need a motion on 5.04.
I will move approval of Item 5.04.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Roger?
Yes.
Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Congratulations, Chris.
Now we're at 5.05, approval of geotechnical engineering service providers.
So we did, we did an RQP, so these are, these are basically groups that we hire from the district standpoint to do the work, surveying, you know, doing testing at other facilities, whether it's soil or concrete, you know, all types of different things. And so what we've done is we've, through that RQP, I think, Chris, we narrowed it down to these three companies. And so we're asking the board to approve, basically, the our ability to work with these three groups for any geotechnical engineering services we may need in the future.
And so it's also needed for state budgets, one of those check wires will work.
Do we have experience with them? Do we work, do we work with them on Measure D?
Yes. First.
And they did, I'm assuming they performed satisfactorily at that time?
Yes.
Yes. Can you just go over again why we're, why we're just, we're choosing three as opposed to just one?
Lots of options, they're busy. I can't make it, call, call another one.
There's, there's the one that we've used the most, who's local, but if they don't get back to us, or they're not performing, or not doing things, then we may need them.
And so the bidding, all came in within dollars of each other, or is there a thousand dollars difference?
Bears, depends on, depends on the inspector or or the inspection, because there's, and the type of testing, they're all, it's all over. So some don't do all the testing, right?
So we're not going to ask them?
What do you mean ask them?
We wouldn't ask them to do something that they're not qualified for. Is there, I'm sorry, let me see if I, is there an hourly amount that they did on this? Okay, and were the hourly amounts within $50, $100?
Anyone else? This is another action item, so, Mr. Buckman?
I'll move approval of Item 5.05.
Mr. Clausen, how do you feel about seconding?
I'd love to second it.
Thank you. All right. We're all a lot busier, so here with you. Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay. Item 5.06, buildings, grounds, and transportation awarding of 3314 for supply and delivery of bulk fuels.
We got one bid.
Yeah.
Oh.
And it's the company that we currently use, and have been using.
And we're pleased with them?
Yes.
It's the lowest bid.
Why is that lowest?
I was going to ask why there's not three that we can.
They've been great, honestly, they've been great to work with, and they think of price, and you know price-wise, right? In terms of.
They come every day, they top us off every day. Let's make sure we have enough diesel for case of emergency, too. That's why they do it.
Just a, just.
One of those requirements that target me.
Just a quick interest, oh, is, so is the dollar amount per gallon changed? That was.
Yes, local company as well.
Any, any questions from the public?
There are no hands up.
Thank you. Back to the board. Who would like to make?
I would like to move through Item 5.06. Award bid number 314 for supply and delivery bulk fuels.
All right, Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is our final agenda item for this meeting. So our next meeting will be?
August 15th.
August 15th, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody, thanks a lot, those of you in the public, thanks for hanging in there with us.